Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 23rd, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch. Here, Councilor Penta is absent, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings held on January 26th and February 9th, 2015.
Motion approved. So are they.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of the utility companies to discuss double polls.
Mr. President, down here.
Council Zambudo.
Uh, can I have-
Council Vice President Zambudo. I'm sorry.
Can I have a moment of personal privilege, please?
Certainly.
Uh, we all know that our dear friend and colleague has not been well, Richard Penta, Ward One Counselor, and I want to let the constituents out there know that where he hasn't been able to take their calls, that first of all, I would ask that we send our thoughts and prayers to Richard and his family. Second of all, that there are five of us councilors at large that are more than willing to do the constituent services for Ward One. They are Brian Arigo, Jessica Janino, Robert Haas, Stephen Morabito, and myself. We're all listed in the phone book. We're also online. Our phone numbers and emails are at revere.org, and we're more than willing to do any constituent services in Ward One. And again, I ask for your thoughts and prayers for Richard. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Zambudo. That was well said.
Is a joint meeting of the utility companies?
Yes. Will the gentlemen from the utility companies please come up to the podium? Councilors, I'm going to open this up to councilors. Any councilors have any questions or concerns? Council, Council Riordan.
Well, I guess, fellows, in light of the fact that we have all sorts of other problems that we're dealing with, you probably, the double polls have gotten to a certain point where they're at the bottom of the list, but I hope you don't think that means we forgot about them. So, I only have one question. It's kind of off-topic. As some of you gentlemen know, we're dealing with the issues of changing light poles down on Park Avenue with the Hill School. I just, my inquiry would be that whether or not you guys have successfully integrated the issues with Simon Tempest and the people, CTA people down there, and if we're on the same page with that, because I know they're looking to get this thing done in the, weather permitting, in the early part of the spring.
I think Dan would be best to address that. We've been involved in-
Dan Cameron from Grid has been intimately involved in that. I'll let him speak to the issue.
Yes, Council, we, Simon did get ahold of us about a week and a half ago to let us know. We've been working with them on clearance issues and so forth, but he did let us know that the city has approved a project to relocate the poles and wires across the street. So, we're working with our engineering folks, and the mayor spoke to me tonight as well about it, to get that going.
Thank you. Yeah, we're looking forward to getting that, because now with the weather and everything, we're kind of, what was once a weather-friendly project is no longer. So, we need your cooperation, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to do that. Thank you.
Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, Dan, would the city absorb the cost of that, or would that be in the bond issue, or what?
Um, I don't think that we would be paying for it. No, I think usually a pole relocation like that, because it's, there's no-
It would be basically the city paying it?
Correct.
You know what the cost of that would be?
I don't know. I'm not sure yet. We have to design it and find it out.
If I just may answer that question, it's one of the projects that I'm involved in, and what it is, is that it's part of the bond issue.
It is, okay.
It's inside the bond issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Any other councilors? I have a couple of questions. Okay. My first question goes to Verizon. Stan, the pole on Library Street, I think there's two poles maybe down there.
On Library?
Yeah. I've mentioned this before, and I know with the snowstorm, it's probably, you know, difficult. I know you fellows were working, there was a cable problem in the area of Ward Five, and I know you took care of that. I'm very appreciative.
Yeah, there's one that Verizon, Ballincourt, and there's another that, or two others that Grid has.
Okay.
So, I'll work with Dan.
You can work with Dan on that?
Yeah. I will tell you, Counselor, that the snow is an issue for-
Oh, I understand that, and, you know, we don't expect to see you up there climbing on poles with all of the outages we've had all throughout the Commonwealth and the country, really. I have a couple of questions for Dan. Dan, there's a, there's a bridge that, on 1A, in the, it's, if you're heading north, it's just prior to the General Edwards Bridge, and I've noticed that, it's for a couple of weeks now, seven or eight of the lights are out down there, and I don't know whose responsibility that is. I don't know if it's NG or the Commonwealth, but I wonder if you could look into that for me and see if we can get those lights back on. It creates a dangerous situation, particularly in this type of cold weather when the road ices up at times.
You know, the ramp.
Yeah, the ramp, that's right.
Those are, those are owned by the state.
Are they?
Yeah. The ramp is owned by the state.
Do they maintain them, or does National Grid?
No, the state maintains them. We supply, you know, a feed to them, so perhaps it's the feed, but we can check that out, but the lights themselves are maintained by the state.
Okay, I really appreciate that. And the other thing now, and I know there's nothing you can do in the next couple of months until, you know, we'll probably get into the spring, late spring, but we have just had the, through the generosity of the mayor, had certain streets on Riverside repaved in the past couple of years, and I noticed that they were working down there trenching, and I believe I had spoken to you about this, I called you, Tobin Avenue, North Shore Road, they were trenching, putting in some new gas lines down there. I was told it was something that had to be done, and I understand that, and I know the residents understand that also, but I would hope that once, you know, once that is complete and the snow is gone and the spring is here, that whoever's doing the contract, whoever's doing the work down there would get back to the city and repave that area down there, because now they're trenches, and we all know with this weather, they're going to settle. They need to be repaved once they have settled, and they need to be sealed so that the condensation doesn't get into them and cause them to heave. So, I would, I hope you could look into that.
Riverside, you said?
Yeah, on Riverside, yeah. They did quite a bit of work down there on those, on part of North Shore Road and Tobin, and I think, I think the work was probably done five or six weeks ago. So, it'd be nice if we could get that done for the people down there.
Yeah, so we wait until the spring.
We, we use all our Chapter 90 money to repave streets in the city, and we don't get that much money, so when we get some money and get the opportunity to get a couple of streets repaved or a neighborhood repaved, then certainly we want to see them maintained in that proper order, and I would appreciate that very much. Thank you. Council Novoselfsky.
Mr. President, you know, I always thank the guys for coming up here, because this is one of the, one of the greatest things that, you know, working together with these guys, and, you know, for the last year and a half that we've had them up every, almost every month, but I would ask that, to Stan, I guess Stan's been our liaison as far as providing the PLM list, could you make a point that we get a copy of that the Thursday before the meeting, next time you come up?
Yes, I will, I will tell you, Counselor, that we're in the process of changing databases from PLM to another system, and that, PLM just had ended towards the end of January, so we're still in the process of training people, and as soon as that works itself out, I would be glad to provide that to the city.
Now, to you, Mr. President. Since you've mentioned that, you know, are we making sure that the fire chief and our wire company is involved in that, because we don't want to lose track of that-
No, exactly.
-on the city side?
The way that the training is working right now is that the companies will first be trained, and then the municipalities will be brought in so that we're, you know, everybody understands how this works. This new system has brought in new municipalities or new electric municipalities that have their own electric companies, so that's been kind of interesting, but, you know, the people and the personnel that have been familiar with PLM here in Revere will be made familiar with the new system.
Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you, Council Novoselfsky. Gentlemen, I want to thank you on behalf of the Council and the residents of the city for your continuance, coming up here and resolving the problems that we have, and we do have many problems from time to time, and we're very grateful for your input here. Thank you very much.
And we always look forward to it.
I'm sure you do, particularly on a cold night. Thank you. Thank you.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered upon the refunding loan order.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This, I believe, was pushed off because of all the snow we've had, and so our Director of Finance is here, George Anzoni, who is always looking out for ways on how we can save money, and this is one of those ways. I think we're going to save about $200,000 a year just by refunding this long-term debt, so we'd appreciate the support on this. As I say, Director of Finance, Anzoni, is here to answer questions, should anybody have any, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anzoni?
Yes, the reason for this refunding is, what we do is, the financial advisor and myself, the first Southwest for the City of Revere, first financial advisor of the city, first Southwest, always cull through all of our obligations to make sure, bond and debt obligations, to make certain that we, there's no better rate for us. Back in the '90s under Mayor Haas, we put a callable feature on our bonds, and that way there is, in the event that if the, somehow the interest rates went lower on the bond market, that we would be able to call the bonds on the callable feature, call the bonds, and actually refund the bonds and resell them. So, it's the same as if you mortgaged your house, remortgaged your house to get a low rate, and that's what we're doing. We're going to save a, on one issue, a $219,000, another issue, $6,000, so a total of about $224,000 the city will realize as savings over the next years until the rest of the bond and debt scheduled on these bonds and on these issues are sold, excuse me, or retired, rather.
Thank you, Mr. President. That amount there would probably just about pay for our snow removal budget this year, so it's a-
You wish.
Well, I mean, over a six-year period, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that's-
We'll save the $219,000, $224,000 over the period of what's remaining, what's saved by one-time sources.
Okay, well, it's important.
I don't want to give you an impression that we're saving $1.2 million.
Yeah. Are there any other, well, this is a public hearing. Are there any other proponents here?
This is a public hearing?
Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here? Seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a smart financial move on the city's part. We've done it in the past, and again, whenever you can save interest rates, it helps out the city itself, so I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Any other councilors? Any other councilors? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. We'll take a vote on this now. Roll call.
Shall the City Council move to approve the refunding loan order? Councilor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Riordan is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the refunding loan order has been approved. Calendar item number three, communication from the mayor relative to the MWRA Local Water System Assistance Program Bond Authorization.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the Council. This is just an opportunity that the city has taken advantage of historically. I don't want to say each and, each and every year, but most years, whenever it becomes available, we like to take advantage of a zero-interest loan. We know the work needs to be done in terms of relining our, both our water and sewer systems, and so when you can borrow money at 0% interest, it's always a good thing. It's, I believe, $1.85 million that is being asked for, you know, to be authorized for us to borrow, and we'd appreciate the Council's support in this. Again, as will be the case with the next several calendar items, Director Anzoni is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any councilors have any questions of the mayor? This will be ordered to a public hearing.
Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to Distinguished Budget Presentation Award of the Government Finance Officers Association.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This was, this was an award that, that the city has been seeking really since I took over back in 2012. You obviously see the difference in the budget that we've been presenting to you, and we try to improve upon the presentation each and every year, and that's really through the hard work of our finance team. Again, Director George Anzoni, our auditor Laurie Giadella, my chief of staff Miles Lane Kennedy, Sarah Concanon from the Collins Center at UMass. It really is a tremendous effort, and this year, we were one of maybe 20 communities across the Commonwealth that was able to receive this award for the way we present our budget. So, we're very proud of that. I know the Governmental Finance Officers Association will be coming up to the City Council to recognize our collective work together in, you know, being awarded this designation, and again, I want to thank the Council for all of your support in working with the administration. That's the only way that things like this work, is if we all work collectively. I know that's what we try to do as an administration, and, you know, I believe deep down, that's what the public wants, and you see how things work so much more effectively when we do work together. We're able to accomplish more and get more things done, and this is just another indication of the direction that the city's going to receive this distinction. It's not an easy one. It's the highest award that's given by the Government Finance Officers Association, so you all, like we are, should be very proud of the award.
We are certainly very proud, Mr. Mayor, and I know the City Council is always looking to work with the administration to bring better services at a lesser cost to the residents of this city. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I appreciate the mayor's humility. I, I'm one that wants to be more of a cheerleader and congratulate him and his administration and his finance team for this distinguished award. It's not to be sneezed at. This is quite an achievement. I'm very proud of it, and for my tiny little part, but I think that the mayor and his administration should be really proud of it, and I, I think he's sort of downplaying it, and I'm not going to allow him to do that. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zambudo. Any other city councilors? Council Guanasso.
Mr. President, every single time that we have the opportunity to sing praise to public officials within our community, I think, deservedly so, to give recognition to people that do exemplary type of work, and obviously, mayor, resident, and staff, including with that, George Anzoni, and his mindset with all his financial background that assists the mayor in these particular efforts. This is a reflection, not only on the administration, it's certainly a reflection of the City Council and the staff that works with the mayor, and also is a reflection of the City of Revere. It's another positive means for our community, and it's an arm boost for us to, to recognize that the City of Revere is doing well, we've met the challenges, and we're certainly going forward with the city that we know we have and working hard to improve it each and every day, and I think this is what it's really all about, and to receive these types of awards is really gratifying to all of us, and I think that's a gratifying effect to our whole community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Any other councilors? Okay, Mr. Mayor, I look forward, as I know my colleagues do, to the presentation when it does take place, and this will be placed on file. Thank you.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to Standard and Poor's Rating Services Rating sustained at AA negative, AA minus.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for correcting that to AA minus, it's the AA negative. It has a, it has a negative connotation, I guess, when you say it that way.
It's pretty positive.
Yeah, we're very proud to maintain our bond rating. You know, it's something, and I'm sure that former Mayor Haas would appreciate this, they don't give these ratings out lightly. You've got to fight for them, and so I know, you know, being on the phone with, with George, who's done this year after year after year, and seeing how hard he fights to maintain this bond rating, really the highest in the city's history, is something, again, that we should all share in the, in the accolades, because I think it's a very positive thing. There, as you may know, there are cities and towns that have been downgraded during these past several years, and, you know, there's no question, like they have, you know, like they have been challenging, and we're excited about the new administration who has promised, you know, to be really committed to local aid and, you know, something clearly that we're all interested in up here on the city side. We know that, you know, we've got our challenges, but local aid makes it a little bit easier on us to try to budget and, and do the things we want to do, because as I say all the time, and we, and you all recognize, and I think, Mr. President, you just alluded to it, we want to try to provide as many services as we can at the, at the, at the lowest possible cost, and we work very, very, very hard at that, and, you know, so that we have a strong balance sheet, and it's great to know that the market is actually acknowledging that, and that really is what's driving these lower bond rates that we're able to take advantage of that saves money for the city. So, again, it's because of our collective budgeting and attention to finances that's allowing us to participate in these type of successes, so I want to thank you for that.
Any councilors? Council Zambudo. Council Vice President Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, at the risk of sounding like a cheerleader, I'm excited that we continue with this tremendous rating that, as the mayor alluded to, is the best we've ever done in the city, and to continue it when a lot of communities are going in the other direction, it just proves that Revere is a city on the move, and we're fiscally responsible, we're looking out for the future of this city, and I'm just proud to be a part of this team, this whole team, and we are a team up here between the City Council and the administration, and I hope we continue to work as a team throughout this year, even though it's an election year. I hope we all look for the greater good, and I am truly excited about maintaining this AA minus bond rating, and I don't know what else to say, just very happy. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Council.
Thank you, Council Vice President Zambudo. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. This news is great for the city, you know, as far as bonding, taking advantage of great, great rates. I'd like to commend the mayor and his financial staff led by George. As we all know, it's the best the city's ever had, and I know how hard it is to work with the financial institutions and securing an increase, okay? But congratulations, Mr. Mayor and George, for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Council Haas. I want you to make one comment, and I think it goes along with what we're discussing here this evening in a different manner. Prior to the 6:00 meeting this evening, we had a dozen-plus police officers come up here to the City Council meeting to receive awards for outstanding work as police officers in the city, and people probably didn't notice that if they turned on the 6:00 City Council meeting, but we're very proud of that also. We're very proud of our chief, the work he's doing here, and, and these new young men that are coming on of the force who are doing an outstanding job in this city. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Council Guanasso.
Again, we pay tribute to the mayor and certainly Financial Director George Anzoni. Two issues earlier, we just authorized almost $2 million with 0% interest. Here we go, and we have a rating of AA minus, which is really beneficial when we come to borrowing money at the lowest possible rate. This is a positive vein financially, and when we, if we, we got the review over the weekend or a couple of weekends ago in reference to our financial findings by outside auditing firm, and it all alludes to the type of activities you see here tonight. It's showing that, we saw it a couple of weeks ago, if anyone reviewed it, and it showed in detail that the City of Revere is going in a positive direction financially, and people are concerned and saying, well, where are we good in all this money? What are we, we're doing it very, very well, and we're doing it very, very cheaply and inexpensively. So, that's a positive thing. We need to spend money in order to keep this community alive and well, and to borrow money at the least possible rate is so beneficial to all of us, the taxpayers should be very, very happy about this. This is good news. This is great news to tell the people of Revere that the two items that we just talked about earlier today. So, I think that, again, it's a great tribute to what's going on at City Hall, it's a great tribute to the mayor, his staff, and George Anzoni and his staff, and certainly the City Council for recognizing and being part and parcel to what we're doing here to put Revere in a positive financial position. So, I concur with the findings of the outside auditing firm, and I think that after reviewing it in the exit reports, and it's just beneficial to, and it's so self-rewarding to see something positive like that, to show the community that, and I think those type of activities should be publicized, to show people the highlights of what our city's all about. And so, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and George, for your great effort.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Any other councilors? With that said, I'll say-
You know, if, like, I could just say just one thing-
Certainly, go ahead.
-to that. Thank you, Mr. President, and, and I think all of you that spoke essentially said that this is something that the whole city really should be proud of, and that we do, you know, as best as we can have our house in order. You know, sometimes it can be misleading. You open up the paper, and they love to sensationalize salaries and things like that, and sensationalize the budget. I mean, but, you know, we're, you know, we're doing this in spite of adding a couple of hundred kids per year into the school system that clearly jumps up the city's share of Chapter 70, that we're, or, you know, the Chapter 70 we receive, and then we got to kick in on the city side, you know? So, the budget does go up, unfortunately, but, you know, we have put our heads together here and, and addressed it, and addressed it in a way that still puts the city in a positive light, and that goes, you know, most people are going to be sitting at home, and if they happen to be clicking on the cable channel right now and watching this, saying, oh, you know, big deal, the Government Finance Officers Association, and the AA minus, and, but, you know, that's all stuff that we need to be concerned about because it does affect people at home, and as much as we know, you know, people, you know, you're not going to make everybody happy 24 hours a day, 7- to make everybody happy 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, but this really is stuff that, you know, people should be happy about, to know that they invest and live in a city where their finances is being controlled both by the administration and the city council. And so, like I said, you know, I look forward to yet another year where we work together and hopefully continue to produce these good results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That will be placed on file. Next item on the agenda.
Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to a transfer from free cash to the stabilization fund.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, if it would be possible for the clerk to read calendar item number seven as well, because those really should be flipped, six and seven. You know, basically, it's our approval of free cash, and then we're going to transfer per ordinance the free cash in there. So, if it'd be, yeah, if we could take seven first, I suppose.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to the free cash approval for FY 2014.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, you know, as you know, free cash essentially is what we budget for and pay out, and what we take in in receipts. And if there's a balance, that's considered free cash. And that could be a positive number or a negative number. This year, we were extremely fortunate. We kept our nose to the grindstones and wound up with a free cash figure of $6.08 million. And in our water sewer enterprise fund, $1.89 million. So, it really was a very, very good year for us. We don't anticipate this type of results every year. As you know, the last couple of years have been around 3.25, and I think the prior year was similar. But, you know, again, you know, we're going to do the best we can to have a great bottom line number at the end of the year, but I wouldn't anticipate every year just going up and up and up. This was a great year, and I'm happy about it. But, you know, we still need to, you know, you know, we still have a budget coming up. I suspect, like we have in the last couple of years, we may have to dip into that free cash. As you know, we lost those car rental surcharges. We bought a little bit of it back by way of excise tax, but nowhere near what we need. So, we've taken some hits, and, you know, but it's good to know that we have it there available to us. So, now, as far as the other calendar item that was flipped around, the transfer, that's simply just by ordinance, 15% of each of those numbers going into the stabilization funds of both our own city-side stabilization and then the water sewer enterprise fund stabilization. So, that'll be $913,261.05. That'll be going into the city-side stabilization, and $283,721.25 going into the stabilization fund on water sewer. The rest is just going to remain as free cash for now, and if we need to transfer any more at some point, certainly that's something we can talk about.
Well, that'll require a vote. The communication-
Well, yeah, yeah.
-will be placed on file after the vote.
Yes.
Call the roll, please, on, I think, number seven.
Shall the city council approve a transfer from the Water and Sewer Enterprise free cash to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Stabilization Fund in the amount of $283,721.25? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanaso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta is absent. Councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer to the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund has been approved. And shall the city council approve a transfer from the general fund free cash to the stabilization fund in the amount of $913,261.05? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanaso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Morabito. Yes, Councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta is absent. Councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Okay, now we'll go to number eight.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of George Anzoni as a member of the Revere Housing Authority.
Appointment Subcommittee.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the adoption of Mass General Laws Chapter 40U and corresponding ordinance proposal.
Order to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to audited financial statements.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Loen Merera, 1123 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Mass. as a constable.
Appointment Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Mr. Paul Minsky, 15 Lynn Shore Drive, Lynn, Mass. as a constable.
Appointment Subcommittee. Number 13.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councillor Novoselsky that the mayor, superintendent of public works, police chief, and fire chief work out a comprehensive snow removal plan for FY 16 to include one-sided parking throughout the city on even side parking or even year.
Councillor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's going to open a can of worms tonight, but we know it all has to be done. And I don't expect that something is going to be solved tonight. I know we're going to have to go into public works. We're going to have to go to get a lot of input from all of us, from Superintendent Goodwin, fire chief, police chief, the mayor, and I'm sure several other people will have their input into this. It's not an overnight fix. This is something that's going to be going on for, I'd say, for the next nine or 10 months. And hopefully, we do solve something by next year, because going through six or seven feet of snow within a three-week period is not an easy task. And we're still feeling it now. Are we all happy with what's going on out there? No. Do we feel we could do better? Yes. And I don't want anybody to think that I or anybody here is taking anything away from members of Public Works Department. They have been straight out. A lot of the guys have worked 24 hours, which they're probably not supposed to. People have gone, they've had to go home and actually stop snow removal periods to let these guys get some rest. And, you know, I look forward to working with people and working something out. I've been professing this for many years, that we do something more streets that have emergency arteries. I know we added several streets in the last storm as an emergency, which had to be done. And I'm sure there are many other streets that every councillor here in this council chamber will make recommendations of what streets they feel should be designated as emergency artery streets. And I know the traffic commission has a lot to do with this. So, they're the ones we're going to have to lobby to help our cars get through and make things easier for everybody, for everybody. And, you know, I just think we have to do it. And I know, Mr. President, the next motion that I'll put on right now that is about the Revere Beach North Shore Road, which we call Old North Shore Road, down in the old Walcott School area between Revere Beach Parkway and Wonderland. And I know I'm combining them, but it has something to do with this. And I've been professing for the traffic department to do this for five years, but unfortunately, it's a state road. And trying for us to do something and work with Mass Dard on it is not, is a very difficult situation. We kind of made it work in this last storm by opening it up, but I know a lot of people lost their parking spaces because they had to move out. But if they didn't have to move out in the first place, the parking spaces would have been there with the cribs right there for everybody to park next to them. So, I know we'll take that up separately, Mr. President, but I just wanted to get that out now, so I wouldn't have to talk about it afterwards. But, thank you, and thank you for your time. And I hope everybody thinks about this very, very strongly, very, very strongly. So, with that, Mr. President, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councillor Novoselsky. Councillor Janino.
Thank you. I think it's a great motion on behalf of Councillor Novoselsky, and I think it definitely opens up a conversation that we need to have. So, I'm excited that he put something in like this, because, you know, a lot of main roads in the city were cut down to basically one lane, and you found cars, you know, pulling into snowbanks or people's driveway to let other cars by. So, I think that it's a conversation we need to have and a plan that we need to come up with, and I'm glad that it was put in tonight so we can get rolling, even though that this weather event was definitely something that hopefully we don't see again. It was very rare. But it's a conversation that needs to be had. So, if this does happen again, we do have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Janino. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was somewhat taken back at the way the snow removal occurred in the historic snowfall. I go to streets, you know, and I look at what the privates do. The privates go down the middle. They come back, they go down the middle. They come back, they go the opposite way, down the middle. These should be instructed to push it back a foot on either side to allow cars to go by. I know, for example, in Fenley Street, where I used to live, I've been up there many times, and you have to stop the car, as Councillor Janino indicated, to let the person by. I think if these people are instructed properly how to snowplow, instead of just going out there for the money, I think that will benefit all of us. And I agree with Councillor Novoselsky as far as coming up with a plan, you know. All too often, we talk about plans, but we need to do something definitive to address this problem. Because, again, if there is a fire in any of these streets, I doubt if a fire apparatus could buy, and I'm serious. I understand the chief said he'll take off Mary's to get up there. Okay, that was probably said in jest, but I'm sure he would make sure the apparatus got to the situation at hand. But again, I think that people have to, I think our guys did a great job with our question. I think we have to sit down with the Public Works Department. There are issues that involve, when you're in a hill, you don't use a little truck to get up there. You don't use a big truck going down a flat area. You have to be reasonable about it. And I think this gives us a great opportunity as we're coming into March to address this for next year. I think we need major overhaul of the whole system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Haas. Councillor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend Councillor Novoselsky on this motion. I do agree that a comprehensive plan around snow will be, will be helpful, and I think starting the conversation earlier rather than later makes sense. And obviously, we were hit with some historic snowfall this year, but that doesn't, that shouldn't preclude us from planning for the future. One issue that I would bring up, and it was actually Councillor Novoselsky's email that, about potentially using one ways, certain streets being one way. I think that would be an idea that would, that could be helpful, certainly in streets that are two ways, but after snowfall become basically one way. If we could get a communication plan around some streets that may turn from two ways to one way, that might help traffic. It might help traffic flow a little bit better. And, you know, I do want to mention that, as Councillor Novoselsky, I think, alluded to, that this is in no way an indictment on the work that the DPW did, because there are only 15 or so guys that we have available, and the resources are limited. And like councillor said, some of them had worked for 24 hours straight. And I think what we need to think about is what our priorities are in terms of our city services, and in terms of the DPW, whether or not 15 guys are enough down there. I don't, I don't think anyone would say that it is. But if we're, if we're going to go forward with a 15-man roster on the DPW, we need to be able to hold our, our private contractors accountable, and be able to say that if they're not doing the job that, that they're being paid to do, that they, that they are no longer going to be doing the job for the City of Revere. I know that in other communities, they were, they were pulling Revere contractors into other communities because they could pay them more. City of Somerville was paying top dollar for, for contractors and pulled some, some good Revere contractors out of the city. So, having a plan and thinking about how we can keep those contractors accountable, maybe it's GPS, I don't know how many of, of the contractors are required to have GPS in their cars, but that might be helpful. And, and thinking about what other tools in our toolbox we have in order to hold people accountable. And I do think that overall, our, our snow removal efforts have been pretty, pretty good. There are some parts of the city that are, are difficult, and a lot of it is because of the amount of snow that we have to deal with, you know, two-way traffic becoming one way. And, and I think that we can, we can address that, those issues in the future. Again, I commend Councillor Novoselsky for putting this out, and look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rigo. Councillor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I certainly agree with everything that's been said here tonight. I, I, this storm, these storms have been a real wake-up call, has, have really informed us as to some of the problems, issues that we have, even really issues without snow, mostly involving automobiles. But, but also, it has taught us that we need to effectively plan for this kind of an event, or any kind of an event, really. I mean, the days are gone when we could have a six-inch or eight-inch snowfall, and it would be plowed, and everybody'd be back to normal within 24 hours. Obviously, because of the, the increased population, the increased number of vehicles in, on our streets, and obviously, this, this year, the increased accumulation of snow, we really need to put together a comprehensive plan addressing all of the issues involved with preparing for storm, preparing for winter, and, and having a protocol set up so that it's not an issue of, you know, who calls Donnie to get what done, and he's running helter-skelter, trying to plow this thing, trying to dig that guy out, trying to do this, trying to do that. We need to have a protocol put in place where we close streets, or eliminate parking, make them emergency on a basis depending how, how serious the storm is. We have to certainly designate far more emergency arteries than we, we have, because as, as was suggested, it's only a matter of time before a fire apparatus is not going to get, be able to get up the street. We, we were lucky this year because, probably because the fire that did occur was so low on the street. But if that fire had, had been another 300 yards up that street, I assure you, there would have been major, major problems. And we really, really need to address this in a comprehensive way. As much as I appreciate Councillor Novoselsky's, what I consider to be a conversation starter, I suppose, motion, we really, really need a comprehensive plan. And, you know, I'm, I would have done it this week, except I was, I kind of put together a little outline while I was hanging around watching the snow of what, of some of the things that we might want to address. But I think, I think it's going to be up to the administration to appoint some sort of a committee, some sort of a commission, to delve into all of these issues and come up with some concrete proposals, which will include, I'm sure, a suite of ordinance changes, because we are going to have to seriously look at many of our ordinances regarding automobiles in particular, street closings, one-way streets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to have to really look at some serious changes. So, I'm all in favor of that, and, and I think we need to do it in a real comprehensive way for it to be effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Riordan. Councillor Guanaso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this is a, an important subject based on the fact that everybody is, ends with right now, and tempers are really getting high. And what we have to do is just take a step back and think of what's taken place. As I traverse the, my area in Ward III, I noted some streets that I thought were not such a great shape. But then I said, reality has to take a play here. So, why isn't this street properly cleaned? And I see cars on both sides of the street. I see one car here, another- And I see cars on both sides of the street. I see one car here, another car over here. The plow would have to make zigzags to go down the street to make a correct plow. We're all to blame in this particular effort. I think that the motion warrants that we meet with Public Works Subcommittee, we meet with Public Safety Subcommittee in a joint meeting. I think we have to have workshops for contractors, outside contractors that we hire. I think we have to do that prior to snow season. We have to tell them what we want. But before we give all these instructions to these plowers, we have to give instructions to our community. You can't park on both sides of the street. That's the obvious. And then, what do you do with these cars? We have to address these issues before we make any sense of what we're trying to do here. We just can't come up with a plan and say, "Okay, we want these streets plowed right." And I had one individual wanted curb-to-curb. For God's sakes, I mean, you had seven feet of snow out there. Curb-to-curb, you'd be putting the snow on people's roofs. We've got to put common sense into practice. Hopefully, we'll never see this type of effort again. We'll never see seven feet of snow again in such a short period of time. But in the event it does, we have to have a game plan. And the game plan is very simple. First, let's have a structure for where our cars go. Then we can come up with all the good ideas as to how we should plow these streets. If we don't come up with a good plan to remove the cars, at least one side, maybe allowing these individuals to park in public areas, such as schools, we have to do something to help people. And the only way... When we help these people, they'll be helping us do the proper job, and they'll get back to their streets and their parking in front of their homes again quicker, if they listen and do what we tell them to do. But to suggest that we correct people's plowing down the streets and... No one's worked harder in this snowstorm than myself. I've been out there every day for three, four hours, every day. Go by my home now, you won't see a snow speck in front of my home, because you will know why? I pushed it all to the side and out of the way, so other cars can go by, so I can park in front of my home and allow people that come to our area have a safe driving experience. But then, when I make the turn to go on Bossum Street, woe's wit. It's like this. Why? Because your car's on both sides of the street. Very simple. We've got to come up with some sort of plan. We've got to do it immediately. We've got to get into a lengthy conversation. We should invite traffic to come to our meeting. I don't think we should give this off to a Subcommittee or any of us. We should keep it right here in-house. Have Traffic Commission come to our meetings. Have a drink meeting with them, and come up with a game plan with them, because you have all the proper people, that's traffic, who run the community when it comes to traffic. Let's do that. Let's do something to... But we have to tell people that we're doing it for their benefit. We ask you to be inconvenienced by moving your car to one side of the street or the other, or moving it completely into a private parking lot. It's so we can plow in front of your home, so you can park there the day after the storm. You'd be surprised how easy it is. It's not that hard. Even with seven feet of snow, we can do this job. We can handle it. But common sense has to dictate to something, some sense of reasoning here, you know. We can't just dictate to people and say, "Okay, you do the middle of the street, you do the side." How can you do that? How can you possibly do that? So I offer that out, Mr. President. And maybe we can dump all the snow in Ward 5, Mr. President, you know, and maybe you would be...
You would never get away with it, sir.
But I'm... We have to come up with a solution. We have to come up with something that makes sense. Just correcting people who do plowing is not enough. It doesn't serve a purpose, because they're going to look at you and say, "Okay, tell me what I do with the car. Tell me what I do with all the cars." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Ganaso. Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also commend Council Novosowsky on this motion. I'm on the same page with my fellow colleagues. To the viewers who are watching, as a council, you can see our concern and our passion and our eagerness to correct this situation. And I hope you understand that there was so much snow, and each and every one of us are doing our best to reach out to the DPW and resolve your issue. All you can ask from us is to make an effort. And I think this motion is the first step of making that effort to correct the problem in the future. So I think trial and error, you know. Let's try this out. Keep more discussion. As Counsel Regal and Reed said, comprehensive plan. This is step one, and we'll get there sooner or later.
Thank you, Counsel Morabito. Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to... I think it's a great motion. This storm has been just unbelievable for everybody for the last few weeks. I think it's time that the city, you know, I... As a police officer, for driving these streets for 30-some-odd years, and then, you know, watching the growth and the increase of the cars on these side streets, I mean, it's just... It's time that we really have to start thinking about one-way streets, emergency parking on one side. It's a... I know it's going to be an inconvenience for residents, but even in my ward, fortunately, most... I have sections that have wider streets, but where... I also have sections that the streets are narrow. And if I take Asti Ave, for example, everybody knows it's a cut-through. I mean, people use it all the time. I'm guilty of that myself. And during the storm, if you drive down Asti Ave during the daytime, people can pull over, and you can do two-way traffic. But when the people come home at night from work, the cars take the parking place, and you get stuck there. I did suggest that to the superintendent that, at times, either the street has to be made wider, or you have to make it a one-way street during a snowstorm. Or even, not during a snowstorm, even without the snow, these streets, there's just too many cars. Take Charger Street in my ward. I was stuck there a couple of times. The light going into the Sharpton Center, if you're on the... If you're leaving Charger Street going into... Trying to get into the Sharpton Center, the arrow to go left comes on first, and you compete with the people coming out of the Ward Street, not Ward, Charger, the other side of Charger Street, coming out of the Sharpton Center. Now, during a snowstorm, there's only one lane there. So if the person in the first car is... That light does not change green until after the people coming out get going. And believe me, they don't stop to let you... They don't stop to let you come through. So you're stuck there. It gets to be kind of gridlocked. So there's a lot of things that have to... They have to either, you know, they have to make sure they keep that up as a two-lane on Charger Street. I mean, they get stuck enough with traffic on that street that they don't have... Sagurni's another one. I mean, they got a... There's a lot of good things that we can come up with in a meeting of the minds. This, as one of the counselors said, this is something that... This storm, I think, brought to light that we do have some parking problems here that have to be corrected. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully, somebody doing the mayor, or we do it through the DPW Committee, thanks to the Ward 2 Counselor. We get something started here and can remedy this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. Briefly, I want to thank Council Novosowsky for putting this motion in. I think it's long overdue. You know, last week, we talked about appropriating $27,000 for fire hydrants because... so that they could be identified by snowplow drivers. Well, it's interesting enough to note that on my way here this evening, I saw a fire hydrant that was crushed by a snowplow. So I think that's an excellent thing that we're doing there. And it also helps the firefighters identify quickly where the hydrants are. Another thing I've discussed with the mayor was implementing, once we get a good plan in place for parking, implement these blue lights, flashing blue lights throughout certain sections of the city. We might put one in Donnelly Square in Beachmont. We might put a couple on Broadway. We might put them on Sargent Street, wherever, Revere Street, so that people know when there are no parking restrictions on certain sections of the city, on certain streets, et cetera. I think that's an excellent thing, and I think it's something that should be included in this plan that we're talking about this evening. Another thing that I think is important is plowing. When you plow down a street where there's one-sided parking, go down the other side of the street, right to the curb. As you know, right now, there's a lot of snow in this city. It's going to be melting, and we need to have those catch basins freed up so that the water will be going into the catch basins and not into people's basements and neighborhoods, et cetera. So again, I think this is an excellent motion. I want to commend Council Novosowsky, and I think we can all work together to make this happen. And I think the residents of this city during these past three weeks have been very cooperative with regard to the plowing efforts of the contractors and the public employees. I know we did maybe miss some areas. Maybe there's some areas we could have done better, but we're going to look to make that better in the future. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next motion.
...
That's going to Public Works Committee.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Council Novosowsky that the Traffic Commission adopt emergency artery designations to the easterly side of North Shore Road between Revere Beach Parkway and Butler Circle.
That should be included with, you know, the previous motion.
Mr. President, can we also vote on that so Traffic Commissioner can work on it at the same time?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Take a vote on that, please.
You want a roll?
Yeah, roll. Yeah.
All fit and roll.
All right. All right.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counsel Janino that the mayor requests the Globe Direct to command its delivery personnel to only place flyers on the porches or stairs of those residents receiving the subscription, not thrown on the sidewalk or landscaping. In light of the recent snowstorms, I have received several complaints from residents that Globe Direct flyers have been the cause of broken and jammed snow blowers because the flyers were not properly delivered.
Counsel Janino.
Thank you. I'm sure everyone is as sick of hearing about this as I am of talking about it, but it's something that I get a lot of calls about, and people are angry. If they're going to have a private company deliver it and not pay for postage, it needs to be handled correctly. I did also get a report from the resident that contacted me about this, that the Globe did cover the repairs for the snow blower, but it's still quite an inconvenience in the storms. And it's just, again, something that our community does not deserve. If they're going to be delivering things, they should deliver them properly. And if they're not going to pay for postage, it needs to be done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janino. Counsel Novosowsky.
Mr. President, you know, I kind of agree with Counsel Janino any more than this. I know I am the third counselor in the last year that has complained about this company. You know, Counsel Ganaso did it several months ago. Counsel Janino is doing it now. I did it over a year ago. I've spoken to the Superintendent, to Nick Katnasso from the Inspection Services, and asked him what we can do to go after these folks. They are not listening to us. There is no ordinance, per se, against them doing this, but he did recommend that we can fine them for discharging... disposing waste on our sidewalks, and fine them for it as litter, for littering our streets. And I'm going, you know, I'm in a position now where I feel like I want to tell Nick Katnasso, "Go for it, and wherever you see it, send these people fines, and send them a letter. Send them a message. I am tired of these people coming into our city and doing this to us. We try to keep our cities clean and neat, and they come in and do this to us. We ought to go after them. For a final reason, I'm sick and tired of it."
Thank you, Counsel Novosowsky. Counsel Ganaso, and then I know Counsel Janino is the maker of the motion, can speak on this a second time.
Well, I think in honor of this motion, I think that possibly we should have Globe Direct come before the City Council. It doesn't seem like we're getting to their ears to do the proper thing. Counsel Janino has offered this motion out several times in reference to what's taken place, and people have come to her in serious need for help. How do we help these people? I think it's within our power to subpoena them into, before the City Council. I know there are people out there who enjoy getting these free coupons from these, but they're also doing a tremendous disservice to a lot of community residents. So we have to take into being that they have to be... If people don't want them delivered to their properties, then we have to come up with a system, or Globe Direct has to come up with a system, so that happens. But just getting mad at them and sending somebody else after them, I think it's incumbent upon us to have them come before the council. Let us decide what sort of ordinances we can take in place after that particular meeting with them. See how cooperative they're going to be. If they're not going to be cooperative at all, then we have to sanction them within our powers. So I think, obviously, Counsel Janino is right at it again, and she's persistent in what she's trying to achieve here, and I applaud her for that. I think that it's mindful that we don't need this. And certainly, and even once we get through the snow and all that happenings, we come upon the spring months, and people are preparing their property to be presentable to the community and to themselves. And then you have this litter all over the place with these... The way they discard these particular Globe flyers. So I think, Mr. President, it's within our authority, if Counsel Janino would allow it, that we direct Globe Direct flyer organization to come before us at our next regular meeting, or some meeting in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Ganaso. Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a motion that was presented before the council a year ago. There's no reason why it shouldn't be done. I did a little research, and for those of you at home who want to unsubscribe to the Globe Direct, you can call them at 1-800-591-8802 to unsubscribe, or you can email them at direct@globe.com. But besides that, the issue should have been taken care of. I'd like to make a little amendment to this motion, or maybe add another motion, where we send an email as a City Council as a whole. I have the contact information, if you guys want to vote on that, or if Counsel Janino wants to add that to that.
Counsel Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues. This is the third time that I've put a motion of this nature in over the past two years. They've all been a little different, but they've all had the same point. But the last motion I brought up about this is that people have done this. They have called the number. They've sent the emails, and they can't unsubscribe. And that's why I put the motion in, because if it was something as simple as that, they can call the number and email, and the Globe would respect that, and they could unsubscribe, we wouldn't be up here. But the problem is, they're not answering the emails. They're not unsubscribing from the phone calls, so it's a deeper issue. I would definitely be willing to look into an ordinance that would allow us to control deliveries like this and control companies like this that just don't want to pay for postage, and also working with my colleagues to figure out a better solution and to get them up here, and really accountable for what's going on, because it's not acceptable that they do this to our community and not our surrounding communities. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janino. I agree with Counsel Janino 100%. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, unless it's changed, the parent company of the Boston Globe is the New York Times. And maybe we should send a communication, not only to the Boston Globe, but CC it to the editorial board at the New York Times.
Point of information.
Counsel Zambudo. Councilor Zambudo.
It is owned by John Henry of the Boston Red Sox.
It was previously owned by the New York Times.
It was. It's no longer owned by the...
Then maybe communication should go to John Henry.
I agree. And that's why I gave you the point of information, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the motion? All in favor? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Councilor Patch that the mayor requests the Police Department Traffic Division to enforce overnight parking of commercial vehicles on Sherman Street.
Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, this is a problem at Melo's Market there on the end of Washington Ave as you're entering Linden Square. Again, it became more of a problem with this past snowstorms. They parked there, they have these big box trucks. I guess they also have another market. I think it's either Everett or some of those. But they seem to want to park the cars, the trucks down on Sherman Street. I did do... I put a complaint in with the sergeant in charge of the Traffic Division. I think I went by today, and the truck was parked in Walgreens. Now, I don't know if they're going to deal with Walgreens or not, but, I mean, that's Walgreens' problem if they want to keep them there. But they can't park on Sherman Street. For that little strip mall there at the end of Washington Ave, there's only like four or five parking places on Sherman Street that they can use since they took the parking away from the front of the stores there. So they were parking... I actually have a picture that I sent to the sergeant, Sergeant Gino, that the truck taken all those parking places on the side of Sherman Street during the snowstorm. So hopefully now, maybe they... I hope they made a deal with Walgreens that they're legally parking in Walgreens because that will solve the problem of the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Councilor Haas.
I think the easiest way is, isn't there an ordinance, there's no parking of commercial vehicles? Just have the police go down there and force it, make that part of their regular routine, you know?
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Madam Clerk, on the motion? All in favor? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Councilor Powers that the city council present Boston Harley-Davidson with a citation in honor of its grand opening.
Before we get into this motion, I'd like to include on that Councilor Gino and the Ward councillor, Councilor Patch. It was Councilor Gino who first mentioned this to me. Councilor Gino.
Thank you. I thought about this when I was at the grand opening and saw that our state delegation had presented a very similar award to the owners. And after Representative Vincent did, I thought that it would be fitting that we, as a council, showed our support of this new business and how it's revitalizing that area down there. So thank you.
I think that's excellent. Councilor Patch.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. President. Again, we're at the opening Saturday night. It just... I just think they just did such a beautiful job on the building and on the property outside of the property. And it's, you know, you make a $15 million investment in the city, and it certainly is going to help our tax rate, and it's going to... It helps the appearance of my ward. So I know a lot of people were concerned at the beginning of the noise and were a little worried about them coming in here. But since they've been here, I've heard nothing but good things, and what a great job they have done. So I think it's appropriate that we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. I agree with you 100%. That's been a piece of property down there, the side of the old Johnny Foodmaster store that's been vacant for several years. I was there myself the other evening, and I believe they have over 1,000 vehicles in there, motorcycles, which probably equates to maybe a several-million-dollar inventory. And they've done a lot of work, as you said, outside. That area is becoming vibrant again, and I'm sure that they will conform with all of the laws regarding noise or anything like that. So I look forward to the opening, the official opening, and I also look forward to more of vacant properties in the city being developed and with the responsible developers coming in and making the city a little better every day. Thank you. Councilor Novosolsky, I believe you want to have a public service announcement.
Thanks, Mr. President. A little public service announcement for tonight. I know the Public Works Department's been working very hard around the city, opening up streets in the middle of the night. Tonight, they will be doing Shirley Avenue the entire length and also Beach Street from Dunkin' Donuts down to the beach itself. So please move your cars, allow them to do their job, and you'll have plenty of places to park tomorrow morning when they leave. But please, work with them, be patient. Not everybody's going to be happy for various reasons, but please, help us make our streets available for fire apparatus and emergency vehicles to go down there. I know Shirley Avenue's been pretty bad over the last five or six days, but please, help us out, and we'll work on some other streets also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Novosolsky. Councilor Riden?
I believe Central Avenue is also going to be, which borders on both of our wards, Council President Powers is also going to be part of the expedition this evening. So also, people on Central Ave ought to be aware of that, and we're trying to help, so you've got to cooperate. Thank you.
I'm sure the residents will be cooperative, and they all know it's work that has to be done, and it's being done in the interest of public safety. This council will stand adjourned... Late communication?
Communication from the mayor relative to appointments and reappointments to the council on elder affairs.
Appointment Subcommittee. This council will stand adjourned until March 9, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.